The time is 6:00 PM. We are going to work on that connection. We do have a quorum. Today is Monday, August 16th, 2021. At this time, we'll go ahead and call to order our regular meeting. Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Hughes?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez is trying to join us virtually via Zoom, and tech is working on that at this time. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortez?
Here.
And Mayor Tara Walter, here. At this time, we're going to begin with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. As we start our moment of silence, I would like us to keep the family in Coolidge that recently experienced an explosion, their family and their community in our thoughts at this time. Thank you. At this time, we'll go ahead and proceed with our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules may limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I do have two that were just handed to me, and if anybody else would like to speak as well, it's open again to the public. First, I have Ms. Cassandra Shurm.
Can you hear me now?
Perfectly, thank you.
Is the clock starting? Yeah, okay. My name is Cassandra Shurm. I live at 2664 North Smithsonian Court in Florence. The reason I'm here today is to inform you of a continued harassment claim my family and I have been receiving since 2014 from our neighbor. In 2014, we moved our family to our dream home located in Anthemale Ranch Community. Three days after moving in, there was a knock on our door, and there stood an elderly gentleman who informed us that a tree in our backyard was blocking some of his plants and needed to be cut down. Again, we'd only been there three days. This was just the start of what had become a well-known and well-documented case of harassment by councilmember John Anderson and my family. We've endured years of text messages, instant messages, and even Facebook posts from John Anderson for varying reasons. We have everything from our dogs barking to a water from a small garden I planted leaking through the block wall.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mayor, but the reason I'm interrupting is is there anything that's going to be related to the jurisdiction of the town council here?
Yes.
What is that?
Can I continue?
It's the mayor's meeting, but just as a reminder...
I don't know what she's going to say.
Call to the public is for items related to the business of the town council's jurisdiction specifically, just as a reminder.
Okay. I don't know what she's going to say.
May I continue?
Yes.
Okay. We even get authority that one of these text threads was even taken from a town official and shown to her. What would be the reasoning for this type of nefarious action? While in Arkansas, dealing with my husband's father's gruesome death, he received a phone call from John Anderson telling him that he needed to paint the back wall because my small pepper garden, the water was leaking through. At this time, my husband advised John to never call him again. The harassment, as what I believe, turned to an illegal cause over the past couple of weeks. A picture of our backyard was taken, with 100% confirmed to be taken from John Anderson's backyard, was shown to us. This has destroyed any sense of privacy and happiness in our home. Mr. Anderson's back wall is over eight feet high, which means there would have to have been some extraordinary efforts made to take this picture. We have a six-year-old daughter and a 13-year-old son who were in the backyard frequently. We just had our daughter's 16th birthday party with numerous 15- and 16-year-old girls over there. How many pictures has John Anderson taken over the years with our family in our backyard? Our daughter was only eight when we moved in. As a mother, I'm sickened to know that we have a neighbor who is unethical and immoral, that he believes it's okay to not only take pictures of people's backyards, but then share the photos with others. We hope that the Florence Police Department will continue their investigation to assure our family that there are no other pictures of our underage children on Jan Anderson's phone, camera, or computer.
Mayor, I mean, I don't see how this, as it continues, relates to anything that is within the jurisdiction of the town council.
I need a continuance, sir. Even going even worse, there are no videos of underage children, even their friends. I cannot begin to tell you the anxiety I'm now taking walking out to my own backyard to immediately look in the section of our backyard of the wall to make sure no camera or phone over the wall was there. It breaks my heart that moving our children to our dream homes has begun so toxic to our environment due to John Anderson. We have been forced to file an injunction of harassment against Mr. Anderson in order to keep him from not only harassing our family, but to keep my husband from a hostile work environment. Mr. Anderson does not seem to have moral or ethical fortitude to represent the Florence Town Council, and I believe it being in the best interest of the town that he would have his fair share of bad press lately for John Anderson to resign his position immediately. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Anderson, would you like to?
Yes, I just will say two things. One, this is an HOA matter, and our town attorney is correct. This is not a town issue. And second, I did not take those pictures. My wife did, and so I have been wrongly accused personally, and she was doing that as an HOA violation, so.
Okay, thank you. And I have Michael Shurm speaking, community spokesperson for nonprofit. So Cassandra had self, so these are two separate. Okay, thank you.
Yes, my name is Mike Shurm. I live at 2664 East... I'm sorry, yes, East Smithsonian Court. I'm here today to actually give thanks to Mayor Walter and interim Chief Walter for showing up to the graduation for the CERT team. We had a new class that just graduated on Saturday with 20 members of that new team, and they made it a great time. Also, over the last month, we did take a trip to Maricopa to present an award from the Florence CERT team to one of the Maricopa members who had taken upon himself to come out here and assist us over the last three classes to teach and help us and help us become the team that we are today. There was kind of a trial by fire with the CERT team. They graduated on Saturday, and on Sunday, we got activated for that tragedy in Coolidge. We were asked by the county to respond, which we were able to put a complement of six individuals out there to assist in rehabilitation for the investigators and the firefighters. We've also been able to schedule that out for the next two weeks with not only the older members, but the new members, so that we will have a complement of four people out there to assist in any of the needs necessary in that area. Just want to say thank you for showing up.
I want to say thank you as well. I appreciate the invitation to go to the graduation on Saturday. It was nice because there was people from all ages that were present. Some of them were former students, which was nice. They are also looking forward to, once their shirts come in, coming before all of the town councils, so that way they can be uniformed in their green shirts. Yes, next time, we'll send an invitation to all of council. All right, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Call to the public at this time. Anybody online? I see three attendees and no hands raised. So we're going to go ahead and close call to the public. Moving on to item number six. Item number six is our presentations. 6A is a presentation of certificate of appreciation to Mr. Douglas Stewart for his effort to clean up and maintain the Historic Butte View Cemetery on Adamsville Road. Just want to start off with a little bit of background regarding this. As many of you are aware, there has been an ongoing effort to clean up and maintain the Historic Butte View Cemetery on Adamsville Road. What you may not be aware of is that this effort has been singularly led by one individual. Beginning back in 2019, and occasionally accompanied by others, Mr. Douglas Stewart has almost single-handedly removed brush and debris. He has cleaned grave markers, restored pathways, and he has worked diligently to restore the cemetery as a monument of pride for the community. Mr. Stewart has also compiled a brief history of the Butte View Cemetery. There's a copy attached in the agenda, and Mr. Harmer will speak further in his portion of this presentation. He refers to himself as the independent community volunteer. Mr. Stewart has sought no recognition for himself, and he has conducted this work principally by himself. We, as a town council, our staff, our community, feel that you should be recognized for your selfless efforts to bring pride back to the Butte View Cemetery and restore our history in the town of Florence. At this time, I want to invite you and Mr. Harmer up to the front, please.
While the mayor is joining us, just a brief couple of items about Mr. Stewart. First of all, as the mayor said, attached to the packet, which is available on the town's website, anybody that goes in there, you will find the history that he has put together. It not only has history and stories about some of the individuals who are buried there, but also just on the general wildlife of the area and vegetation of the area, and just generally a good overview of the desert view or Butte View Cemetery. A little side story. I first met Mr. Stewart about two years ago, when he first started. I come to work down Adamsville on a regular basis, and I see this gentleman out there working on the side of the road starting to clear up a significant batch of weeds and brush and all kinds of stuff, and admired the effort, pulled over, introduced myself. We talked briefly, and I went on my way, not thinking much more of it, other than that's really cool that he's doing this. About six months later, down in community development, we got a frantic anonymous...
Recording in progress.
We're being recorded. We got a frantic anonymous phone call from somebody in the public. There's somebody digging up graves in the Butte View Cemetery. Of course, that put our office into a panic, to say the least. We did go out there. We did find one grave that had apparently started to cave in. It had been cornd off. It had caution tape around it, and stuck on one of the knots on the tape is a little business card with Mr. Stewart's name, address, email, phone number, everything. I don't think he was hiding anything, so we kind of determined very quickly that he wasn't digging up graves. He was indeed salvaging them and fixing them, filling them back in and cleaning the headstones. If you have not been out to the Butte View Cemetery in the last few months, even with all the rains and everything else we've had, it is stunning what he's done out there. A tremendous amount of work. Everybody that we've talked to, especially H-TAC and other people interested in the history of Florence have been, you know, very, very complimentary of his work. That's why we wanted to recognize him this evening.
I would like to add, please, that one of the major contributors to that effort out there was Eva Salazar. I barely got to know her when I first got there, but she welcomed me to help, and we split up the cemetery out there, but she got very sick later on. So I actually took one area that was full of concrete junk and turned it into a beautiful rock garden.
You could turn around.
And it's got a sign. I was going to be saying Eva Salazar Garden. So I would like to nod to her about her contributions that went on out there, too.
And Mr. Stewart does give tours, by the way, and that includes visiting the ghosts. We have documented two?
I've had two of them talk to me while I was on my knees behind me. And my Latina partner had one talk to her at the Adamsville Cemetery. It's an experience. Mr. Harmer, this guy would have to dance to this.
On August 14th, 2021, Florence Farmers Market Day. Can we play the video, please? Proclamation, Florence Farmers Market Day. Whereas farmers markets are essential businesses that connect families to healthy local foods and agricultural products directly from Florence and Penal County, farmers and independent food businesses, and whereas farmers markets attract shoppers each week and thereby stimulate local farming and downtown business economies with sales throughout each market day, and whereas farmers markets incubate new farm businesses and young farmers with small budgets to hone their entrepreneurial skills, develop their products, grow a loyal shopper base, and build experience in order to be successful, and whereas farmers markets ensure healthy food is accessible to everyone, and whereas its mission is to promote economic vitality and the town of Florence appreciates farmers market professionals who nurture entrepreneurship and foster successful partnership with businesses and community leaders. Now therefore, I, Tara Walter, Mayor of the town of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim, August 14th, 2021, to be Florence Farmers Market Day, and urge all residents to join me in recognizing the many benefits of our local Florence Farmers Market and to visit our local Farmers Market on the second Saturdays of the month at the McFarland House from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. All right, we do have some representatives with us from the Florence Farmers Market. Sheri, I'm going to have you come on up, and I'd like you to introduce your team. Sheri has been instrumental in getting this Farmers Market up and running. She has brought her team with her this evening. Come on up, Ms. Sheri.
This is like the birth of my third child. I don't know that my kids know it or not, but... Thank you to everyone. Ron, come on up. AKA Philly Pretzel. Yeah, so he is the main salesperson for Mediterra Bakehouse Bread. So he can tell you a little bit about that if you want, but I also want to bring up Susan. She helps me out at the Farmers Market and at McFarland State Historic Park. She's the longest-running employee at Mc... She's the longest-running employee at McFarland. So she's my go-to person when I'm not sure of what to do. So Susan is there, helping sell and a part of everything that we need to have done, so I'm very grateful. And Tanya could not be here tonight, but she helps run the gift shop from the inside. So I'm grateful to the town of Florence, to you for coming out and for photographing the market, for everybody that likes and shares and promotes. And we have family farms from Eloy, from Casa Grande, and we have visitors from Apache Junction, Queen Creek, Mesa, Queen Valley, Santan, Florence. And still, to this day, we have people that have never been to McFarland State Historic Park or the Visitor Center that come out and enjoy the park for the very first time. So for that, I am very grateful. And then we've also been working with this Junior Ranger program with Arizona State Parks. So not only are we promoting locally grown produce, we also promote the park and programs for children. So, thank you.
Thank you.
It's an honor. Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to officially present your team, if you guys can stay up here with your proclamation.
And I'd like to invite everyone from the town council also. It's the second Saturday of the month from 8:00 until noon. I think Snake, I saw you and your family one time when we had the market out on Main Street. But now that we've moved it over to McFarland State Historic Park, the vendors are able to enjoy shade, and then again, we have the visitor center right there. So if you guys can come out, I'd really appreciate it. And to everyone else, thank you.
Bless you. All right, the next presentation is being tabled at this time, or postponed until next time. This is on our Water Smart. Bless you. Item number seven, consent. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote. As part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is adoption of updates to the Florence Downtown Redevelopment Improvement Program, including renaming the program to Florence Downtown Redevelopment Area Facade Program. Item B is to enter into a contract with the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce to administer the Downtown Redevelopment Grant and facade grant programs. Item C is approval of the Downtown Events Assistance Program. Item E is approval of the following operating transfers: $4,040 from the Historic Preservation Grant Funds into the General Fund; $20,389.67 from the General Fund into the HIDTA Fund; and $1,115.14 from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety Grant, which is a police expense, into the General Fund. Item F, approval of the employment agreement with town attorney Clifford L. Matisse. Item G, which is approval of the amendment to inmate work contract number 211928 State of Arizona Department of Corrections, Rehabilitations, and Reentry between the Town of Florence and Geo Secure Services LLC, foreign on behalf of Florence West Correctional Rehabilitation Facility, also known as Arizona State Prison Florence, to support public service projects, including but not limited to landscaping, roadside cleanup, and cemetery brush abatement maintenance. Item H, authorization to enter into an amended lease agreement with Penal County for the vacant lot located at 383 North Main Street, Florence, Arizona. Item I, resolution number 179721, resolution of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, adopting revisions to the town of Florence Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Pension Funding Policy. Item J, approval of the July 19th, 2021 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Item K, receive and file the following board and commission minutes: June 30th, 2021, and July 1st, 2021. Is there any member of council that would like any item removed at this time? I would like to just remove item C. So if nobody has any others, I'd take a motion at this time.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda except for item 7C.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let me just get to the correct agenda location for that. All right, 7C is found on page 80 of 283. Mr. Allen, how are you this evening?
Good, Madam Mayor, how are you?
Good. Oh, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, I was just trying to not waste too much time trying to get to that page number, so thank you. So the background of this program is the proposed Downtown Events Assistance Program. It is envisioned to encourage more events that promote Florence's unique history, operate at least annually, increase visitor traffic tourism, and provide a positive economic impact. Awards must only be used to offset direct costs of services, supplies, and/or marketing for approved events. So I do know that you've had some experience in our prior fiscal year, just, you know, testing it out almost as a pilot program, so I was hoping you could share that with council and community.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Ezekiah with the Community Services Department. So the last fiscal year, we had dollars in the budget that was dedicated towards the Main Street program and partnership on concerts. And so that was kind of rolled into a program whereby we were able to partner with some additional entities. For example, Old West Days was one of those, and provide partnership dollars through kind of a mini-program. All in all, it went really well. We had great turnout. It was an opportunity to extend the amount of programs that the town of Florence offers, Old West Days being one of those. And so, and Third Fridays, we were able to partner on that program. So I would say a success altogether on that small mini-program.
Thank you. I just wanted to... I just wanted to take a moment and highlight that and make sure everybody knows about this program. Because this is a great program that will bring tourism and visitors down to our Main Street, because that is part of the, the program is the draw. I did have one suggestion that I just wanted to make at this time. Understanding the grant is approximately $25,000 and we still have much of our year planned. One of the items that I always see is sometimes people are unaware of programs when we have them. And I know that there are certain people that already are aware of this program and how it works. I would like to suggest maybe having half during the first half of the fiscal year to allow for other nonprofits and entities to learn about the program and have an opportunity to also put in for that second half, so that maybe we can have some diversity and some different events that may be already or not in the works or not being planned. Council, how do you feel about that suggestion?
I, I like that suggestion just because, like the mayor said, if, it's not really known, I don't think, to everybody that that program is available. So those that know about it kind of gobble it all up, and then there's no opportunity for us to introduce a new event because the other events. And I, I'm assuming that your hope is that as an event happens, that they become self-sufficient and we're not funding it the whole time. So year three, we should be more of a sponsor, not a major factor in their funding, correct? Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, council member.
My only objection to that is that we do run very seasonally. And so my concern is where we would split that, that half a year, because if we have a lot of programs that are, say, running in the fall where it's nicer weather, my concern would just be that we would have not enough funding then, but then maybe have too much funding to where it's too hot for a lot of nonprofits or things to run other programs. So just something to think about. I guess otherwise, I do like that idea a lot.
And I'm just doing the, the calendar out now. And it almost runs, yeah, to fall and spring, because we always have some, that's better than me trying to break down months. So we do have events that go in the fall as well as events that go in the spring? Okay?
So, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, so the, the thought is to take the $25,000, split it in two, and then have an opportunity towards the beginning, and then an opportunity later on throughout the year, splitting the dollars up.
As well as when we're looking at those applications for the spring, because we want to make sure that there's enough time for people that are not familiar with this program, since it's new, to learn about it. And they'll learn about it through advertising and some of the events that occur in the fall.
Mayor, members of council, we'll make sure that we make those modifications to the RFP, and then we'll make sure that we run it twice. We'll have to run it once in the fall, and we'll run it once in the summertime. And the way that we will do that is we will narrow the scope by saying half is available in the fall, and we will narrow the scope again by saying half is available in the spring.
All right, thank you. If there's no further conversations on that, can we please have a motion?
I make a motion we approve consent item agenda C with the changes.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. Item 9A, New Business, resolution number 1790-21. This is discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Merrill Ranch Unit 59A and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents. Ms. Maricela Benitez.
Mayor, we need to go back to unfinished business.
I apologize. I skipped right over that. In our unfinished business, item A, ordinance number 705-21. Second reading and discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, approving a zone change from a neighborhood office, manufactured home subdivision, single-family residential and neighborhood family residential to highway business commercial for 725 East 8th Street, Assessor Parcel Number 25015A. This is also PZ 2130. Ms. Benitez.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, I come back to re-present the zone change for 725 East 8th Street, APN 2050015A. As previously stated, this has .46 acres of reusable, or usable land on it, and their owner is looking to rezon the land from what we call the Fun Four of zonings, neighborhood office, manufactured home subdivision, single-family residential, and neighborhood family residential to highway business commercial zoning. This piece of land is located on Highway 79, also known as Penale Parkway Avenue. From the Planning and Zoning Commission, this piece was pointed out that their frontage on 8th Street only has 130 feet, which does not meet the minimum lot width set in the Town Development Code. However, another part of the Town Development Code does consider the lot legal non-conforming. Staff has done public outreach, including mailed notice to those 300 feet around the property. We have done an advertisement in the local newspaper. There is a sign on the site facing 79. We've done a citizen review meeting on July 1, Planning and Zoning Commission for their recommendation of approval, and had a public hearing on July 1. And we also brought it to Town Council for its first reading and public hearing on July 19. The findings by staff were the proposed rezoning meets the current 2020 general plan, and the rezoning should facilitate commercial development along Highway 79. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends the approval subject to the conditions that the development of the subject site follows all applicable town code and ordinances, and any new owner should be aware of the legal non-conforming status. We have the owner of the property here, if there are any questions.
Council, do you have any questions regarding this agenda item? All right, we do not have any questions. With that, we do need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 705-21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under New Business, resolution number 1790-21. This is discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Merrill Ranch Unit 59A and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents. Ms. Benitez.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, there are three final plats on this agenda, but I'm just going to go ahead and do a presentation on all three. So the units are 59A, B, and C. They're all located in the same area, and they were separated in order to not have an abundance of lots going all at the same time. The first one is 59A, located on the far east side, and it has a gross acreage of 30.4483 acres, open space of 12.92, 9922 acres, right-of-way a 3.5426 acre. Total lots will be 93, and the density is 3.4565 dwelling units per acre. 59B comes into the same area as gross, gross area of 51.1850 acres, open space of 12.6422 acres, right-of-way 6.6098 acres, and has total lots of 146, bringing the density to 3.5450 dwelling units per acre. Finally, on the far west side, we have Unit 56C. And these, this gross area is coming around 24.2145 acres, open space of 8.6415 acres, a right-of-way a point of 3.7366 acres, total lots of 76, coming to a density of 3.1386 dwelling units per acre. Now, this comes to a total of 95.8478 total acres in the area, 315 total new single-family lots, and a dwelling acre density of 3.38, which is under the, the set dwelling units per acre in the PUD. This was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 6. We do have the representative, Jared Baxter, here from Polte, as this is brought forward by the applicant, Polte. If there are any questions.
Council members, do you have any questions? Councilmember Mendoza?
I just have one question. Is, does this include the expansion of National Way, the roadway going in? Or is that for a later, a later time?
I'll have the representative from Polte come up and answer that one.
Not at this time, council member. It's not imminent, well, it's dedicated, it's ready to be brought in, but it's not to be brought in as part of 59A, B, and C. There's additional dwelling, additional, additional subdivisions that are being designed along National Way as it comes out on Phoenix that is part of a separate ownership, South Minnesota Partners at that point in time, that will be brought in and developed at that point in time.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir, for being here this evening. It's very much appreciated. Vice Mayor asked if we could do all three in one vote. We do have to do them separately, but we have been presented all of the information, so we can go ahead and, with item A, we need a motion?
I motion we approve resolution number 1790-21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item B, resolution number 1791-21, discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Merrill Ranch Unit 59B and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents. Ms. Benitez has presented this. We did have opportunity for question and comments. Is there anything else that you wish to add? No. Any other questions or comments by our council? With that, we need a motion.
I motion we approve item B, resolution number 1791-21.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item C, resolution number 1792-21, discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Merrill Ranch Unit 59C and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents Ms. Benitez had presented. Council, do you have any further questions or comments? Seeing no such move, do we need a motion?
I motion we approve item C, resolution number 1792-21.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, resolution number 1796-21, discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, approving and authorizing the acceptance of a dedication of real property for Centennial Park Avenue. At this time, we'll queue in Mr. Chris Salas.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I'm presenting an item for a dedication of right-of-way. This would be adjacent to the existing Centennial Park Avenue, right-of-way south of Butte and up to 16th Street, that would be adjacent to Sunrise Estates Phase 1. And this is in need of widening to meet the town's standards for a minimum width. So the town was taking on this project. The town worked with the adjacent landholder. The adjacent landholder was gracious enough to dedicate this free of charge to the town, and we will be doing the improvement of essentially the other half of the road with the curb and gutter and roadway improvements. This item is just for the dedication, the acceptance of the dedication of right-of-way.
All right, thank you. Council, do you have any questions? All right, seeing no such move, do we need a motion?
I motion, go ahead, Tom.
I make a motion we approve resolution number 1796-21.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item E is discussion approval disapproval to enter into a contract with Cactus Transportation doing business as Cactus Asphalt to construct a half-street improvements on Centennial Park Avenue in an amount not to exceed $140,532.88. Mr. Chris Salas.
The engineering department worked with an outside consultant. We perform all the geotechnical investigation necessary to determine the thickness of the section for the improvements. We have taken that recommendation, turned it over to one of our JOC contractors from the Penale County contract. We have received a cost proposal on this, and we would like to move forward with the construction immediately, so that Centennial Park Avenue will be a standard with road within the Town of Florence.
All right, are there any questions or comments by council? Councilmember Anderson.
You know, we haven't had very good luck with cactus asphalt lately. I'm still sort of concerned about Hunt Highway. It's not very smooth, and I'm, so I'm not very impressed with cactus asphalt. Do we get bid from anyone else?
We did not have anyone else with on those existing contracts to go and look at. We have recently, we have, we did not get any additional bids on this project.
Mayor, members of council, I just want to remind you that we talked about this project probably two months ago. This was the right-of-way to be able to extend that Centennial Park. We, at the time when we spoke to council, we assumed that we were going to be doing it at the same timeframe as we did Hunt Highway. Problem was, is that we had to work through the dedication of the land before we could get there. And so now we're at the time where we're coming back with the dedication of land, and this is underneath the JOC.
Okay.
Well, I don't like JOCs, so I would not, for the reasons that councilmember Anderson stated, Hunt Highway is not a smooth road, so I'm anticipating us to have issues with it quicker than estimated, just because it's already bumpy, it's not smooth. And I'm not a fan of JOCs because I don't think that they actually give us best pricing. I think that we are paying more for some of the services that we're getting because there's no competition for the people on the JOC. That's just my bad stance.
Town Attorney? Can you educate us upon JOCs and pricing?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, when the, when the town uses a solicitation by another entity, and there are various entities that allow that, whether they be state, federal, or private, there is a solicitation at the very beginning. And then, for example, in this situation, the unit prices are determined at the beginning of the solicitation, and I believe that's what engineering has used in this situation is essentially piggybacking, for lack of a better term, onto that initial solicitation. So there is, there is a competitive process at the beginning, and the town is using the benefit of that competitive process.
And then Director Salas, you have experience with these type of improvements and pricings. If you were to look at the scope of the work that they are going to be doing and the cost, also understanding that this was in conjunction with a prior contract approval, would you state that, how would you state this prices coming in as in comparison? how would you state this price is coming in as, in comparison to, as if we were to go and rebid this out?
Extremely competitive. This was a competitive selection previously performed by Penal County and those prices were negotiated as part of a competitive selection. When we have used JOC versus a hard bid on First Street, they were within a few thousand dollars of each other between using the JOC method and First Street. So we've, have experience and obviously, we're gonna, we're gonna change direction moving forward. The Town Manager has instructed me on future projects that are maintenance related that we would be utilizing JOCs and anything that is a true construction project, we would be using a hard bid method. But on a project like this where we do not have a design, we would have to spend a significant amount of money to do a competitive bid. We would be spending $60,000 to design a road where we're saving that $60,000 by utilizing a JOC contractor that could utilize station offsets versus a design that would be necessary for construction documents on a hard bid. This method saves us significantly.
Thank you for that clarification. Counsel, any other questions or comments?
In my comment, it's not about the price. It's not about the JOC. It's the quality of the work that was all done by this particular contractor.
Director Salas, have you gone out? And this is, I realize the way that I just said it. It's not the way that I wanted to say it, so backing it up. After you've gone and inspected the roads, after the completion of the work, what was your professional findings?
We have not closed the road to perform some of the MAG style testing. We're gonna do that during the warranty period. But I do agree, we have driven the road several times and the road does not appear to meet the smoothness coefficient for that road. So we have already let the contractor know that we are unsatisfied. We were gonna be working on something as part of the four-lane project to correct that under and on their dollar. But we were not gonna do that while there's two lanes. So we're still working on, again, having a contract for the design services so that we can do that as one project, the remediation of that surface course along with the new lane. So we would do the outside lanes first so that we would not disrupt traffic a second time.
If I understand you correctly, that underneath that warranty period, that matter that has been spoken of regarding the concern of the road will be addressed and fixed at that time.
I, I wanna be as honest as possible. We are gonna negotiate a fix for the road during that time period, but we probably will not do the remediation until after the warranty period because we do not want to have any type of lane closure. That, that work will be performed as part of the four-lane widening in the very near future.
I think when, I think it was Councilman Hughes asked about four-lane and that was gonna be a long time, a few, 10 years out?
It was to be reviewed like every year or two years, but there was no timeframe for when that four, because remember that was mine and Councilwoman Larson's issue, or I'm sorry, Rodriguez's issue with us doing the overlay and not doing the four lanes now. And because they said Penal County had determined there was not a need and there was no timeframe for when that four lane, there is no timeframe. It's when Penal County feels they're ready for it. So, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, we could be a year or we could be even longer, which with the changes of pricing, yeah, they might agree to it now, but in a year, pricing might be so drastically different that then we're gonna have an issue with them coming to fix the road.
We will resolve this through an agreement before the warranty period is over. And at that time, if that road widening is determined to not be a priority, which is my understanding, it is a priority. That is my absolute understanding. My bosses made it abundantly clear that we are to be moving through with the design so that the design plans are ready and then we will be looking at it in the following budget year and evaluating that. Again, having a discussion, the benefits, the burdens of that. But I do believe that that is a near-term construction project.
So I'm hearing you say that road will be fixed either within the warranty period or we will have an agreement that states they will fix it post-warranty.
Absolutely. That we will have to have some type of agreement in writing between the town and the contractor, reviewed and approved by our attorney and Town Manager.
What happens if that time a different contractor is utilized since it's post-warranty?
Meaning for the four-lane project?
Meaning for the Hunt Highway. So yes, it would eventually be four-lane project, but let's say if they put it out longer.
If, if the project is going to be delayed for some reason, then we would move forward with, again, the remediation before the four-lane project. But that is not my understanding. We are moving forward with the four-lane project in the near future.
Sorry, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Counsel. It seems, this seems to be getting to some discussion that I would prefer for us to not discuss in this forum. If, if we could avoid doing that.
That was the end of the question.
Mayor, Members of Counsel, I'd like to say in other projects where we had a similar type outcome, we have required a bond to be issued to the Town of Florence so that we could use the money to fix no matter what contractor we selected and that has been a common practice.
All right, thank you for that input as well. That is helpful. I will say when concerns were brought forward, this company did follow through with all of the remediation efforts that they were going to do. I will also say that they did abide by their contract because their contract stated that they would have the road on Hunt Highway completed by June 30th and according to the report, they finished a day earlier than their contract on June 29th. They did go ahead and put forth the signs regarding the roadwork and the additional measures in place to help mitigate any traffic and congestion, understanding that this was also originally to occur at the same time as the other projects. There is a cost savings and a benefit that I see to our taxpayers and our community as a whole. So that is my two cents. If there's no further questions or comments, we need a motion.
I make a motion we approve Item Agenda 9E. Oh, sorry. Yeah, E. Sorry, I crossed it out too soon. To enter into a contract with Cactus Transportation DBA Cactus Asphalt to construct half-street improvements on Centennial Park Avenue in an amount not to exceed $140,532.88.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10 is Call to the Public. This is our second call to the public this evening. Is there anybody who wishes to speak at this time? I see nobody in person and I see nobody online raising their hands. So we'll go ahead and close our second call to the public. Next, we have our call to the council for our current events only. Counsel Member Mendoza.
I don't have anything at this time.
Counsel Member Neal.
Just that a citizen had reached out to me about the high school kids driving and I've already spoken to Chief Wells about it. Like I said, I went to that high school. When I would leave school, I would leave a little hot myself. He said he's gonna get all over that, so. Thank you, Chief. That's it.
Thank you. Counsel Member Hughes.
I have nothing.
Counsel Member Rodriguez.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Counsel Member Anderson.
Yes, I have two things. One, I had a citizen suggest to me to remind everybody on the land use survey that's out to vote for Item B. Is that correct? Shake your head. Okay. And so that's a reminder. The second thing that, I don't know if everybody got a copy of the CAP press release. This is very serious, you know. This more or less says CAP is not going to give water to our farmers. You know, I was, happened to be in California coming down to the, all the grapevines there and they're just dying like crazy over there. They've had to cut all the water out. So waters, we've talked about it for years, but it's, it's on us now that we're going to have some very serious problems with our water and how we use water. So be careful how you use your water and support CAP any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cortez.
I don't have anything at this time.
All right. I just have a few things. The first one is on August 5th, I'm going to give a mention to it, but we are going to be having a highlight and celebration in our town. The Arizona chapter of the American Planning Association Annual Awards Program was held on August 5th and it was a virtual. The Town of Florence, the Downtown Redevelopment Area Plan 2020, it was awarded the winner in the revitalization and redevelopment project category. The criteria of the award was based upon innovation, transferability, quality, comprehensiveness, public outreach, role of the planner, and the effectiveness of the project. So I'm looking forward to that opportunity for our council, our staff, our community to celebrate our planning department. They will be receiving an award, so we are excited to be able to have that and put it on display. Again, I want to say congratulations to our third CERT team and thank you for your service. I'm looking forward to the next CERT team that comes out. I did have a question for our police chief. We had some citizens asking about like a police academy and if you were going to have any training for volunteers. So I said that I would go ahead and share that at our next council meeting.
Yes, ma'am, that is our plan. We're still looking at some dates and some times and of course, that's depending a little bit on COVID as well. So we are looking at some timeframes to go ahead and do that.
All right, well, thank you so much. With that, I did not have anything further this evening. As always, I want to say thank you for everybody that has attended the meeting. I want to encourage people to go out and visit our local farmer's market. Again, they meet every Saturday over at the McFarland House from 8:00 AM. Oh, the second, I keep, in the original proclamation I wrote, I had that date as well. So the second Saturday of every month from 8:00 to 12:00. And they have consistency and then they also have new items that come in. And everything has been absolutely amazing. I'm looking forward to the continuance and potential expansion. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. Have a blessed night.